We've called the meeting to order at seven o'clock Wednesday, August ninth. We'll call please.
Yeah.
Eric.
Eric. President. Thank you. Next, we are. We have any electron participation tonight. The main members know. Okay, next, we are going to review and adopt the adoption of meeting agenda for this week. Any additions?
Let's check.
Yes.
I move that we. I'm in the agenda moving topic eleven since coming period. Up to six A. Like six A sixty.
Uh, yes, do we need to take a?
Got it up there just yet.
Yeah. Um, so we any other additional thought about it?
Was nine B gonna be taken off?
Yeah.
The ground's not here.
Okay, we can. So we have a. We have a.
Yeah. I did be part of your amended agenda.
Think so. We have a motion to move eleven to six A and to take off nine B. First and a second. Thank you. Thank you for changing.
Call the roll.
Yes. Uh. Hi. Hi. And looking at last meetings minutes. Everyone have a chance to review them. Any changes?
Good. I made a motion to approve.
Motion approved. Second. Take a roll call there. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move into our first presenter. We're gonna have that for number six. We have Mr. Rick Whittington with Whittington Consultants. He is live with us on Zoom. Mr. Whittington, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Awesome. Very good. So for the for the group, Mr. Whittington was added. Uh, he'll tell us what his company does, but he does specialize in EDA websites. Actually found him. I was working with a customer mine in the western part of state. And I believe Augusta County he does. And uh, long before I knew he did it, I saw their site. Very nice. And some seen some other work. And we've been talking for a few months and. Hopefully now that time will be right for him to talk with us and share what he has. Take it away.
Sounds good. Well, thank you all for making your making time in your agenda for me tonight. Kenny had asked me to come and present a little bit about what we do, some of our experiences, and give you some time for some questions and answers. So I'll take about maybe maybe twenty minutes of time. I'm gonna stop in the middle of this to ask questions. So in case you all have questions, just write them down, and we'll definitely get to all of those. My name is Rick Whittington. I'm president of Whittington Consulting. We're based here in the Richmond area. We're a digital marketing consulting firm. We're a mostly remote agency. Covid sent everyone. Uh, it seems like these days, a lot of companies are remote. Uh, we're able to do a lot remotely. So we now have employees in Virginia, and actually, we have one in King William County, who lives in King William County. Uh, we have one in Ohio, South Carolina, and Mississippi. So uh, we're spread out on the East Coast. Uh, one of our areas of expertise is designing and developing economic development websites. So we've created over fifty of them at this point, and I'll actually show you some of them. I actually sent Kenny some links. Uh, we can go over those if you like in just a few minutes. You know, just some credibility of our work. Uh, we've won several IEDC and SEDC awards for our work. So IEDC is the International Economic Development Council. Uh, and the SEDC, of course, is a Southern Economic Development Council. Those two industry groups have recognized our work many times for work we've done for various localities and regional organizations, State of Virginia and elsewhere. So I've I've actually been active in Virginia economic development for some time. Um, I'm active in the Virginia Economic Developers Association. I've been there for fourteen years. I served on their Board of Directors for a three-year term that just ended last year. Uh, so I've got a lot of experience with economic development, even though I'm not a certified economic developer. Uh, so we're just, we're really blessed to have that extensive industry experience and and recognition. So I'll pause for questions there. What what questions do you all have? I've got lots of other things to say, but. Questions first.
I think we're good at the moment. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's talk a little bit about our services, and that that kind of brings us to, you know, why I'm here today. So Kenny approached me about a possible website for the EDA and some of the sites that you all are trying to market. So our services are website design and development. So that includes managing the website on an ongoing basis, as well as creating the the first version of the website. Uh, we also work on search engine optimization. Uh, I know a lot of people think that that is a one-time process. It's really an ongoing process, and it's the ability to optimize your website for searches. We also offer digital marketing services. So a lot of companies, not so much economic development organizations, but other companies want us to be their digital marketing department. So we do everything from search engine optimization to paid advertising on Google and sometimes Facebook, sometimes LinkedIn. Uh, we do content creation for websites, uh, so much more than that. But that's just a few things that we do on a daily basis. And then the last thing is just technology. So we're doing a lot of setups of CRM systems for companies so that they can measure their sales activity and bring accountability to the sales and marketing process. So what we're trying to do here for years and years and years, we would generate leads for companies, and we would, you know, we would get various feedback on those leads. What we wanted to do is put a system in place to be able to track all of those opportunities, but to help them sell better as well. So this really helps to make sure that things don't fall through the cracks when an organization is selling. It helps them measure the effectiveness of their marketing and their sales efforts so that that technology is a core piece of what we will do as well. So just to move into a little bit of of, you know, who we've worked with, I want to give you some examples of that. So um, Kenny, how do you want to present this? Do you want me to share my screen? Can everyone see me? Uh, I can do that, or how do you want to do that?
Yeah, Chris, he has the ability. Yeah, if you have the ability to share, go clear.
Okay, let's see. I'll I'll attempt to share my screen here. Let's see. Okay, can you all see my screen now? Okay, so the first website we did, uh, well, not the first, the first one I'm gonna talk about today is the Hanover County website. Uh, and this is Hanover County Economic Development, I should say. So um, Brandon Turner and his team previously, Linwood Thomas, I worked with them uh, to create this website. We've done a lot of work for Hanover County over the years. That is my home county. I live in Hanover County. And so one of the things that I'll just highlight a few things here. So uh, the county needed a way to uh, talk about different things that are going on in the community pertaining to economic development. So they have an event feed, a news feed. Uh, we also integrated a property search and community data tool. So uh, this property search tool is is actually a company they contracted with to be able to get lots of information on population density, traffic counts, things like that for various sites in the county. So you can actually scroll in here. My screen's not not big enough to really do this justice, but um, you can hide and show different areas with with sites on the properties and and get various uh, information on different sites in the county. Also, we integrate, and this is something I would actually recommend very highly for you all, and we'll talk a little bit about that, too. Uh, as as part of my presentation is really to help you understand what you should be thinking about when you think about creating that first economic development website. Uh, but we have a Virginia Scan search here, so all of you are probably familiar with this. But just in case, I'll I'll let you know, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership has a uh, tool that they use on their website. It lists all of the sites and buildings that are for lease, for sale. And to to get access to this information is is very easy, uh, but they also have a way to include that application on your website. So I know that you all have a lot or several sites that you're looking to market. So making sure that they are represented here with the EDP on their Virginia Scan platform is gonna be important because what happens is that site selectors that are looking for companies that might need, let's say, forty acres or fifty acres or ten acres of land even, uh, will often hire a consultant to do that. They'll go to the various states' websites that meet their criteria, and they'll look and do a search. And wouldn't it be great if some of King William's sites show up in that list, and then they would be given contact information and various information, like access to transportation and rail and airports and all kinds of things like that. So this is a tool that we included in their website and would definitely recommend including in yours as well. Uh, one of the last things I'll mention with this website is that we've done a lot of work to tell their story through the through the mouths and stories of businesses in their community. Uh, so for example, we have, we've actually made these videos. We went and shot these videos and did uh, interviews with the CEOs and uh, people in the community. And it helps to tell the story of Hanover County and locating in Hanover County through the through the mouths of the customer, through that, you know, mouths of the businesses that are in the community. So we've got a lot of these on the website. We made, we actually shot and edited all of these videos, and uh, and it just helps them to tell the story. So for example, you can click, um, you know, any of these videos. You can actually look at that. So for example, you can click on this, and you can actually watch this video. And if you watch this video, this was shot by our videographer. Uh, basically, uh, this this particular person, if you look at these videos, I'm basically on the other side of the camera. I'm asking him questions about economic development in the county. I want to know more about his business. I want to know why he's successful in the county. I want to know what brought him here, what brought his company here, what factors he considered, what it was like to work with the county government, those types of things. So these are are great because these are shareable in multiple places. So they have them obviously on the website. Uh, they're on YouTube. They're on uh, social media channels for the the county, and you may not be, you know, ready to do that at this point, but at least that is something to consider as you move forward and and advance uh, with the website. So another website we worked on is Greater Richmond Partnership. You all may be familiar with this. It's a regional EDO uh, that serves the city of Richmond, Hanover County, Henrico County, and Chesterfield County. You're gonna see a lot of the same features on this website that you'll see on the last one uh, that I shared. But um, you know, this one features some video up here at the top to draw some interest. Uh, it talks about the locational aspects of the of the area, the region. Demographics has some information on the people that work here, and there's there's hundreds of pages on this website. So obviously, I don't think this will be, you know, the amount of information that you all are looking for. But certainly, uh, this is without a doubt the best economic development website in the state of Virginia. And I could say that pretty confidently. They've won guessing here, but five or six different awards from the IEDC and SEDC uh, for the websites we created for them over the last ten years or so. So lots of information here on target industries that they're looking to attract and the different capabilities of the area to fulfill the needs of those types of companies. Uh, research and data is really important for site selectors looking into the community. A lot of times you, site selectors won't necessarily reach out to someone and talk to them because a lot of these searches are confidential. Uh, they they won't be able to, they wouldn't necessarily be able to talk to someone, for example, at Greater Richmond Partnership without their client's permission. That first initial pass for a site is usually done by looking at a website or looking at data that they already have access to. Uh, so anyway, there's a lot of sections on this website that you can look at. We've got an investor section. There's a lot of private investors in this organization as well as public-private partnership. Uh, I wanted to add a little diversity here, so I'll I'll mention this site as well. This is something we launched earlier this year. This is Stanton Crossing, which is a three-hundred-acre parcel of land uh, just outside of the city of Stanton in here in Virginia. Uh, currently, it used to be Western State Hospital, uh, the site of that, and that was relocated recently. And now this parcel of land, they're they're trying to develop this into a thriving business complex. And so there's a lot of information here about the the facts of the site. We've actually got some drone footage uh, over the location. So if you look at the the virtual tour here, there is a drone video. So I'm not sure if you can actually see this animate or not, but this is some some drone footage that the county staff shot. And you can you can see, you know, the development in the area that's currently or has taken place, and then some infrastructure improvements that they've made to make this a business-ready site. So we're hoping that uh, this website will increase the interest in that parcel of land and get one or a number of companies to contact them as a result. So they're able to do that right here when they request information, gives the contacts, uh, contacts, and then a form uh, to fill out to get more information. Uh, as Kenny mentioned, we've got the Augusta County Economic Development and Tourism website. So this is again, very similar to um, the sites that we've looked at already. Economic development websites share a lot of things in common, and um, you know, it really depends on what the locality is focusing on. Uh, a lot of times, in some cases, in smaller localities, they don't yet know what their target industries are. In some cases, um, you know, they want to focus on different things like sites or buildings. Uh, so it just depends on the locality and what they're what they're seeking to do. Um, but you can see here, we've given them room for news releases uh, for different announcements. Uh, and this is definitely a thriving area of the state as well. So the last one I'll show you is completely different, not in Virginia, Great Falls, Montana. Uh, we worked with them to create this website, and and like I say, every single economic development organization is different. Uh, there is a financing and funding part of Great Falls, Montana. So they've got some information on some business information on services that they provide, uh, some financing that they provide, uh, different businesses in the community. They focus very heavily on their existing businesses as opposed to trying to attract business to Great Falls. Uh, so that's where this site is just a little bit different than the others. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions on any of these websites. And if there are none, we'll talk about considerations for your first website.
Please finish her.
Yeah, I have one just real quick. How did? You hear me?
I can. I can hear you.
How how do people navigate these sites? What's the first thing you type in? Go to, uh, for King William would be King William County Economic Development. I mean, they go to your site and then to King William. Well, how's that work?
Well, they would find this in a number of ways. So for example, if uh, let's say, let's take King William, for example. If the EDA was looking to market a site or a website, in this case, um, you would include the the website address. So that might be kingwilliameda.com or something similar to that, depending on what we could find uh, that's currently available. Or they could go to Google, and they could type in King William Economic Development, and the site would come up as long as it's optimized for those terms.
Okay, yeah, I mean, look, somebody heard of Midwest coming east and say, hey, I'm King William. I'm looking for economic development. Uh, I mean, what's potential? They type in King William Economic Development. It would get them, get them there eventually. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it would get them there eventually. The other thing I'll say is, you know, a website is just a a good place. If we like really content-rich websites, what that means is that you're giving a lot of information on the website. So when someone searches for a term on Google, there's a higher chance that your website will show up near the top. So that's one of the ways. Uh, I would expect, though, for a a first-time website, uh, you know, brand-new website, you're gonna have to, you know, market your uh, potential inventory of sites and things like that. This will be a good way to do that. Uh, I don't know if you all have relationships with Virginia Economic Development Partnership yet, uh, but that would also be a good way to to market things. And having a website is important because uh, that would allow the EDP to send your website to a prospect to learn a little bit more. So that's how that's generally how they would find your website.
Thank you.
Sure.
Kind of answer that. Cause I was gonna lead into Gene's question. Would it, did it say type in King William while when they put in looking for property? Does it come up with a list of different counties?
It might. So it it very well might. So with Google, we don't have control over what results are shown, but we can influence them. So what we would do and what we see as a best practice is that uh, there's a, I don't I don't know if you can see this on my screen or not, but um, for example, you've got home dash Augusta County Economic Development. Uh, what we would do is just put King William County, Virginia Economic Development Authority at the very top, and that would give a sign to Google that it is King William, Virginia, as opposed to King William, Rhode Island. Or so, you know, if if there is another King William, I'm not aware if there is one. Um, but that would be a consideration.
The best way to market it is to with the B E D B, right?
Without a doubt. Yeah, I mean, without a doubt. I mean, I think there there are definitely, I mean, I don't want to present the the, you know, the the idea here that a website is the only way to do this. Um, you can market sites with the EDP, and that just means having a relationship with someone there. Uh, I mean, John Loftus is a guy that comes to mind at VDP who is very, you know, he he's working with bigger sites uh, in the state of Virginia. But certainly, you know, there are people like him that work with even smaller sites and rural sites, and there's probably a VDP representative for, you know, our particular area. And so getting to know that person, letting them know that you have the information available, putting the information in the Virginia Scan system, and just having a good relationship with that person is definitely a good starting point.
Understand we did.
Excellent.
So that's a plus, right?
Right, it is. I mean, the fact that your sites are listed uh, on Virginia Scan is is half the battle. I mean, I'll just be honest. I mean, that that's where most people start their search. They're not gonna start their search necessarily on your website unless they are familiar with your website.
Yeah. That that answers your question.
Right. That said, though, I will say the website is a great place to list information that Virginia Scan might not list or other sites might not list. So there there is a, there is a distinct advantage of having the website and having your own material and collateral there.
Agreed. So Rick, so if we have properties, so on your sites, and I don't know this began during, when you show a site, it's not directly tied to like the MLS or some sort of real estate listing. So if there is a piece of property that's presented to us from a property owner, you you can do the red line around it and all of that creative to show those.
Yeah, so for example, if we look at, uh, hopefully, I'm I'm still still sharing my screen here, so hopefully, this is gonna show up. But if we go to uh, Hanover County, they have uh, featured properties. So these these change periodically, uh, but you can see here, uh, here's a sixty-three, North Lake Two, right here is a sixty-three-acre parcel. And so what we're able to do here is say this is a featured property, and you can get information on this property on Virginia Scan, which is the, you know, this links off to the state system. And they also have, they also, in in their case, have some mapping through that third-party tool that I showed you. Uh, that third-party tool is pretty pricey. So um, it's not, you know, it might not be something to start with, but you're able to do things like show site photos and renderings here, and you might not be able to do that on the VDP website. So they have a site plan. They have a brochure. They have a map here. Uh, this is just a Google map, so you can zoom in, and you can zoom out and see exactly where that particular uh, parcel of land is. And then you can, you know, if you're interested, you can click that button and get in touch with someone. So it, the first step is always to put it on Virginia Scan. If a landowner comes to you and says, I have fifty acres, I want to sell this, I want, you know, I want to try to develop this into something, then the first step is to put it on Virginia Scan. The second step would be to add it to the website as a featured property.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, never stay on time, which we're doing really good with that. Um, anything else, Rick, to add? Uh, we're gonna talk about different packages or where to start?
Yeah, let me let me just briefly, I'll briefly go over this, but I wanted to give you all some some information, too. And I I wanted to be a little bit more informative than just, you know, here's who we are and what we do. I want to talk about some considerations for your first website, and I'll I'll be brief with this. But you know, the economic development industry, without a doubt, is relationship-based, but websites play a critical role in that because they allow site selectors and brokers a door into your organization where you can share information with them that they might not otherwise have access to. Uh, so it it also gives them a direct line to someone at the EDA in case they want to talk to someone uh, in particular, inform that relationship. Um, the website's a great place to market your developable uh, sites and even existing buildings, if those do exist. So this is perhaps the, you know, the most important function is the website is to market those sites. Uh, if you've got land to develop or sites that are ready for development already, you can show those on your website in ways that you can't do elsewhere. So for example, you know, you could put a drone flyover like we showed with the Stanton Crossing website. Uh, you might not be able to put that on Virginia Scan, but that would give someone uh, some information that they wouldn't otherwise have. Uh, one of our clients actually had a drone fly-through of a shell building, an industrial shell building. So you can see, you know, ceiling heights and where the different structural piers were located inside that building. So there's things like that that you can do with your own website because you own that property, you own that website, right? So you can do anything with that that you want. And and I mentioned, just listing your sites with Virginia Scan is is really critical as well. So it's important to also show information like zoning, opportunity zones in the county. Uh, some economic development groups, we've done websites for even list zoning contacts with the county office. If anyone has questions or would like to reach out, those are the kinds of things that you can provide that that other websites cannot provide. And also, that's information that the site selectors don't already have access to. I I I also think it's really helpful to have a comparison chart showing uh, operating costs for businesses compared to your competition. So you know, if you can do that research and have the, you know, the resources to do that, uh, normally, you'd look at surrounding counties. So for you all, that might be Dinwiddie, Hanover, King and Queen, New Kent, Caroline, you know, those counties that are probably competition for you uh, in in some of those areas. Um, other data like largest employers, demographics, tho- those are also commonly shown on economic development websites. Um, and then, like I mentioned on the Hanover County website where we did the the videos, um, it it really helps to speak CEO to CEO uh, because it really shows that there are complementary businesses in the area, and they talk a little bit about how they, um, you know, how they chose and operate in a locality. And so I'm not suggesting that you all do this with the first cut of the website, but it's something to work toward eventually. Um, I'll get into some costs generally and some considerations for that because I know you're probably thinking, okay, what does all this stuff cost? And that's one of the most common questions I get. So um, I'll talk a little bit about where websites fall. So the range, the range we usually work in for an economic development website is anywhere from fifteen thousand to about thirty thousand dollars. Okay, and there's also, that's a one-time fee, and then there's also a small ongoing fee, and I'll tell you about that, too. So what I'll tell you here is that you get what you pay for. So if you get a a five-thousand-dollar website, you might get someone to design the website, but they're not gonna write the website for you. They're not gonna do any photography for you. They're not gonna uh, test it on mobile devices, little things like that. Um, you you can get a website for five hundred dollars if you want, uh, but what you're gonna be getting is commensurate with what you're paying in gen- generally speaking. Um, so one of the, some of the things that we see when we go head-to-head with other companies to build websites like this is that planning what content should be included on the website is really critical. And having done fifty or sixty of these websites in the past, we already know what information needs to go on the website, and we can work with you to decide what to show, how it should be organized, and what the naming should be, naming it in an intuitive way, you know, for your target audience. It in, you know, a project like ours, we're also going to be able to write either some or all of the content on the website, and I think this is where most EDAs get tripped up. Um, they'll go for a lower-cost website and then realize, you know, the website company says that they have to supply the content for the website. And then because all of you have jobs and and work in other areas, no one has time to actually. Because all of you have jobs and and work in other areas, no one has time to actually sit down and and write this and do it well. Um I know, you know, as an example of that, I showed the Great Falls, Montana website. The site took two years to build. Because their E D A chair wanted to write the content for the website, and it took him two years to do it. So just a consideration there, um it's something that I see, you know, a lot of EDAs, you know, make the wrong choice because they realize, they don't realize what goes into that project. Um you know, I know for us as well, you know, we can do some limited photography work as well, so because I'm so close. If you have, you know, pictures that that you'd like to take enough sites, we can do some of that work. We have someone who can fly a drone and take some aerial shots for you. Um you know, unless you already have a library of photography, which I suspect you don't, but you know, one should be eventually developed. And so that's uh something else that we can help with. Um the website design, the way the process works is we'll work with you first on the organization of the content and understanding what goes on the website. Then we'll show you one or two pages of the website for discussion. And that's where I would come in and I would show the website, we'd go over the website, uh you'd be able to revise. And uh eventually approve that design. And then we go build that, so we build a website that's fully functional. We're writing all the content for you, we're optimizing it for mobile devices because about forty to fifty percent of the people that are gonna look at your website. Are gonna do it on some type of a mobile device. Um you'll also need some basic search engine optimization, so that's what I talked about when I said someone's gonna type into Google, King William County, Virginia, and get your site. Um which isn't a guarantee, but at least we wanna try to optimize it to, you know, to the point where it is likely to show up. Um that's usually not included in some of the, you know, less costly proposals, uh but is included in ours. Uh the other thing I'll say is we have a a content management system, we use WordPress for that. Um that's software that empowers you to add or change content on the website yourself. If needed, you don't necessarily need to go to us to make, you know, small changes. Uh we will actually train you on how to do that, if that's something that you want us to do, and we can record that training and present it later, so if you need a reference. Uh you essentially have a video manual of how to update your own website. Uh you don't need no code to do that, you just have to be able to log into your website and and make a few changes that way. Um ongoing, so I mentioned there's a small ongoing fee, that is for website hosting, so we have a server. Uh we own it and you can lease space on it, so if you think about it, it's like, you know, paying rent to a landowner almost. So we have a, you know, we can carve out a small space on that server for your website. Uh we have about twenty-five clients that do that with our website or with their website right now. And there's just a fa- a small monthly fee, and for that fee, it includes the actual rent, so to speak, or the server space. Uh we also do monthly backups of the website, so if anything ever happens with the website, let's say, I mean. You know, God forbid it gets hacked or, you know, you lose it somehow. Uh we can pull it back up and we've got a backup copy. And we also make content management system upgrades, so that's almost like, you you if you have software on your your cellphone, you know how it updates. On a pretty regular basis, we do the same thing with your website. And that's just making making sure it's secure, it performs well, um and everything works as as it's supposed to. So that's what I had to to share with you all, I'd be interested to know if you have any questions or what else you'd like to know about.
Thank you.
Any question? Question?
I'm just curious, is it pretty common for the EDAs to have their own domain? Or is it more common for them to be housed kind of within the county's website?
I can tell you that I would recommend in ten out of ten cases to have your own domain name. Uh you can do this, a- and just out of full transparency here, you can do this on the county website. So the county could actually spin up a section of the website called Economic Development. And you certainly could put information on that. Uh the problem is, a lot of times those systems are not optimized for search engines. So it is, I mean, it is a possible first step for you all, I don't wanna just discount that as a, you know, possible first step. Uh but I always recommend having your own domain name because you can have, you can have one hundred percent control over the website if that's the case.
As we always look at budgets and stuff like that, so there's the one-time upfront costs, and when you set a small. Uh monthly service, um but what is that range usually?
Yeah, most of our clients are paying about two hundred fifty a month for that.
Okay, thank you. And is that including X amount of changes uh per month?
That would include.
Us taking the wheel, making the changes.
Yeah, yeah, that would include the hosting, which is the the rent, so to speak, plus the upgrades, but it doesn't involve any changes. But if you did wanna price that in, we certainly could do that. I wouldn't expect that you're, you would need or require, you know, too many changes every month. Uh but we could certainly price that in, you know, if you wanted to do that. We support I almost a hundred percent of the clients that we do the websites for. Uh and what they usually do, what we usually do, instead of charging them a monthly fee, because a lot of them are either managing their own websites or. Um you know, in some cases, they're they're small localities that don't have a lot of changes. And they would just call us on an as-needed basis, and we would just charge an hourly fee as opposed to doing it, you know, by the month.
Right, so when properties come and go that are listed, does, do the EDAs make that? Or when when you take the wheel and for the most part, y- you add the properties and take them off? Okay.
Yeah, we've got, most of our clients are are adding them, you know, themselves. Um most of the clients are just adding them themselves, but or taking them off themselves, uh but we certainly can do that for you as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Rick, this Jean, uh that one-time fee fifteen to thirty thousand, that's one time. We don't pay anything more except for maintenance fee down the road.
It is one time, it is a one-time fee, and I'll just again, in. In essence of transparency here, the lifetime of a website is generally five to seven years. So this website, i- it's not that you necessarily um would outgrow the website. Or that the website would stop working, but usually technology has advanced in five to seven years to the point where you would wanna redo the website. So, yeah, for it'll it'll last you, I mean, we've got several clients that have used the same website for ten years. So it it, you know, it's gonna continue to last as long as you're, you know, obviously keeping it up to date and. Uh you know, wanna have it, um but but yeah, the lifetime of a general, generally speaking, the lifetime of a website's about five to seven years.
Thank you.
Sure thing. What other questions?
I think we're good. Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Lincoln, for coming and speaking to us about the services that you do for EDAs. And um if you have any follow-up, could send it to me, I could disperse it to the group, or if we have any questions, I can forward some of those questions on.
So, yeah, absolutely, I'm I'm uh, I try to be very transparent in this process because I want you all to know. Uh you know, exactly what to expect, and and I want you to be informed when you, when you do decide to do something, so. If there's any questions that I can answer for you, you know, even if it doesn't involve us doing it, I'm happy to guide you in the right direction, just as a. A citizen of Virginia and trying to be, you know, responsible with the way we do business, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for including me tonight.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Take care.
All right. Um so we, so moving on, we moved up the citizen comment period. Uh up to six B. So citizen comment period, one opportunity of three minutes per individual on non-public hearing matters. If anyone to come forward?
You know, most of y'all know, I come from tractor, I've been in the county since eighty-four. Um for a time, I'm from the county, and I've decided to open up a small business with that county. Um. Economic times are hard right now, to be honest with you, everything is constantly going, the cost to start up is outrageous. Um I know, I talked to Christina. Um she told me she'd get me in touch with certain ones, certain people have reached out. And I talked to Charlie, um the other day when I ran into him. You know, just trying to see if there's any kind of grants or anything like that for a startup business in the county to get going. Um just trying to make something to stay down I grew up in. So, and then we can come up with, I'd really appreciate any feedback, any info, and uh share it with me if you will, and. Like Robert talked to me about uh something, some kind of board thing he was talking about. He said he could back me up more information on it. But um just anything we can do to keep the county going and get the county going in the right direction with more businesses, get the revenue up. Feel like it's kind of struggling, so I see a lot of empty buildings around right now. So anything we can do would be great.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Rook, uh the nature, if you just.
So I'm open to hydraulic hose fitting shop, that's also gonna carry uh some tools and stuff for here in local agriculture. You know, bloggers, so on and so forth, anybody that has anything to deal with hydraulic fluid, that filters and things like that, anything that they can do. I try to take care of it. But I feel that that works, I think, even somewhere, local businesses. Um just here, King Queen, a little bit everywhere, and trying to grow our own business. That's literally, once you leave King William, you don't run into another one till you get handle of an air park. And some of these customers travel and build a pack, come through our community, so when I put stocks, let them go too far and stop manufacturing. Could be more revenue for the departments of the county.
Would your business be similar to Haley Hose and fitting?
It'll be real similar, me and Matty down there have partnered up and agreed that, you know. We'd kind of help each other out along the way, because he's pouring to the cylinder repacks and that cart tubing where I'm gonna do the hose and stuff, fittings more so.
And where will you be located?
Sharon Road, six ninety-four, um Sweet R, right beside the Monkey River Guns.
Jack Bailey's.
Jack Bailey's building, yes, sir. He was about the only place down here that had a manufacturing. Area of love for that. So that's another thing with the county, really, we gotta try to, I wanna try to be part of that, but also work with the county, try to get that taken care of.
Do you find it hard to find a location when you want to start up?
Yes, for some effect, like so many people didn't want manufacturing, which they call making the hose and prepping up fitting, manufacturing. But it's really more or less retail, you know, if you like, you go into that one, buy an auto part that they pulled together, made in the back week. The same aspect, but trying to find places that will let you come into that area and actually have a business. I looked here, I looked in Hanover, and I said, why not stand my hometown? Being six miles from home, like I said, being a root member also, um but also being around the community, being with the people that dug me the dust.
Awesome, well, well, thank you so much. Any, any questions for the board? From Mr. Rudolph?
I I'm hoping within the next two weeks, I'm trying to get everything finished, so we can get a C E O from the county. They've uh tried to get me to, we had to do some refoto inside, take down a few walls. Try to get it opened up, because it's all physical therapy built in, nobody was put in there. But had a lot of little small walls and rings that just built up so bad, you couldn't really do business in it. I'm hoping by having a grand opening on the first of September.
Will they bring the partner?
Um Duke Parker um and Kim Krim. And then Camp Two is gonna be my manufacturer with hydraulic oil and grease. And I'm gonna be probably carrying Bellwalk fiber tools, I'm just in the process of working with Bellwalk to get that all ironed out. I'll sign it something.
Um is there any particular asks that you have for the board? Other, so thank you for presenting your business opportunity that's bringing to the county.
Pretty much just saying, I know, like, I talked to Charlie and I talked to a couple of different ones, but just trying to see if there's any kind of grants that, you know. That are out there that would possibly help get the business up and going, so it's not a straight out of pocket, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars straight out of personal pocket. Uh that's about the biggest part of it, you know, my health and my lifestyle, I had to change from tractor, so I wasn't able to be on my feet fourteen hours a day up there. I had some health issues, I had that big hero. Now, you know, we just gotta dig there.
Awesome, I think that's another question, so you'll be branded Parker, Cam Two, whatever. I'm sure they co-op and some funds to you, right?
Um no, I'm not, actually, I didn't take on the Parker store like uh Wesley did down there at Abbott. Because that's a fourteen hundred dollars of gear fee just to carry that sign out, right?
Right.
And I was like, I just don't, and plus, they don't want you carrying anything else. So it's kind of like, hey, you have this from us, but you don't pay fourteen hundred dollars, but then you can't carry all of this other product.
Going very well, work with them, we got a big store and growing up.
Yeah, and that's like I've worked with all the shops here in town, all the way out as far as Rockville. Richmond, Chesterfield, talking to all the hydraulic shops, talking to a couple, we actually have. Uh one of Ashland shops, he lives here in the county. Um so, you know, the fact is, like you told me, he's he's grateful to see something down here that, you know, he said the biggest thing is having hours. Be in there taking care of the customers after our service coming, you know, somebody needs something, I'll come up and help them out, get them out of the bind. I know Charlie can speak for it, he breaks down the field, you need the hose, you gotta have it today. You know, be some machinery sitting there, down, cost, couple thousand dollars just to be down for a day.
Well, very cool. Mr. Rudolph, would you give your net full name and uh district you live in, so?
Yes, it's Raymond Lee Rudolph the third and Magna District.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Is there anything out there that can help him as well as any other industry if we start to get growing? I'm just curious, I'm directing that team for status.
That's on, that's on the agenda, number ten, right? That'd be part of that. Yeah, ten eight, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very much.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
Small business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Okay.
Well, we don't. The only thing I was gonna mention or could mention is that it's in your. It's been appropriated to you this twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant match. And as much as the the C D A doesn't have a grant program right now, it is within your authority to create one. Um we have to get more details on, it's it's made to spur growth with the expectation that it will. Hire people or and or increase tax revenues. Right, there has to be some agreement in in that uh realm. Uh but it is it their authority, and you do have twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Plus with the rollover or roll forward, put with something like that, if it was your, your desire.
Be he Raymond your quality.
It, it's up to you to make the qualitative.
The group would have to outline. That brainstorm.
No. That was, that was a a true grant match for the eighth of grand.
Yeah, thank you. How about we as a group, we just work through it, and then we have a meeting the second week of September, I believe. And we can come back to a vote board outline for future businesses as well, to kind of keep something in line. I'm gonna go forward.
Yeah, but if he's already started, you know, that.
It it's not. It's not behind us, I think with the E D A and its body coming together. And we outlined what we can do, and then we put that in place, if there's any future businesses, that could also take advantage. They said, yeah, USA in future. I guess I would propose that if we have these funds, that we say, whether it's signage, operational. And then we set out, just as Mr. Hudgens had said, um I know time is always at the essence. In some cases, like you said, it's some qualifications they expect.
The person to meet, you know, to give, give the funds. And what are the qualifications, that's what Steve was saying, but that's something we need to come up with and set, and sell. So. Not correct, saying that, that's.
That's, that's my understanding, and I know that there are some state legislation that goes with that, that gives you that authority and has certain, definitely with it, as far as. Oh, you did do cares money and created a grant program with that, good point.
It had qualifications.
So something similar.
Yeah, and, and that, that was planned in advance, we had meetings in between.
Yeah, probably mirror, like that.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's, depending on your budget, that's your limit, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, qualifications, and then, you know. Every time the devil is born, obviously, money runs out, renewed, maybe.
Yeah, you wanna set certain times that you do it, or do you wanna have it over a certain period?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that happens, but that's kind of a good thing, you got people qualified.
Does this grant we have, uh, twelve five hundred, is this something we do every year?
We could potentially, but what we were referencing for, uh, Mr. Ashcraft, uh, the purpose of it, or set it up and set it for a timeframe, the others could apply as well.
Yeah, well, I was saying though, but is it one shot heal for the?
Right, right now, I'm, you're, you know, the E D A doesn't have any money except what's appropriated to it by the board. I don't see any reason of them stopping that, but they could, um.
If additional funds have, have to come into your account, and establish a greater, a greater pool of money, that's what you want to do.
Absolutely.
But I would think the twelve five would, would. They submitted every year as a request from the E D A. I'm sure the board supervisor, it's all it's going to do work, with continuous fund.
The ways the twelve five coming from, from our budget? I mean, appropriate, what we have, okay.
It was part of your budget and, uh, requests this year and last year.
And then that would be matched?
That's a.
By the recipient?
It's up to you.
It's up to us.
That's your guideline, you know, it'll be matched.
You've got twelve thousand five hundred dollars for grants. It's up to you to create what you would like to do with that money, it could be where, it could be, um, matching a state grant, help someone or an already established program. Where you could create your own program and legal guidelines.
Mr. Ashcraft, please help me on this, if we were to come up with something in this particular situation, could we call a special meeting, is?
Yeah.
In maybe a week or two to come back to the table?
God, first, maybe, I don't know.
That's what needs to happen, I guess, we need to get our hands together.
And it's a lot to consider down, that it was, I guess, with Steve, you've got to consider a lot of things, that, are we gonna, if an opportunity comes up where we gotta match a grant? You know, we have twelve thousand five hundred dollars to play with, which is not a whole lot of money. Also, you always gotta think ahead, if, if the opportunity comes up to match a grant, we need some funds, right? And, oh, we can make these grants available to new businesses coming into the county. Well, if you meet these qualifications. We'll grant you X amount of dollars, you don't wanna do it all, but right then and there, correct?
Well, there, there's options, depending on how the group was proceeding, if we're given cares.
Yeah.
True, okay.
Correct. Let's tear it up, get into this a little bit, and the treasurer's report. But the board supervisor approved the carryover request by the. So that is resolved, that increased store budget for FY twenty-four. So, twelve five was in there initially, and now you've been given another, what is it?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're talking the twelve five that the board had appro- appropriated initially, what you wanna do with twenty-nine five now, certainly have.
Yeah.
Right, I think going forward, we would just have to, uh, talk and then have a special meeting, on any funds that would be granted or more grant programs that we would then establish. So, yeah, right, any more comment? Thank you so much, um. Moving on, uh, we have the treasurer's report?
Uh, yes, Mr. J, I think Steve put this in, you wanna give it to him? Well, we had, go ahead.
Well, as you can see, uh, the report, uh, no money has been spent this year that has, uh, hit our system yet, although, um. I know that there has been a Porta John, uh, invoice come through for, um, the farmer's market for three hundred dollars. And what also is not showing is the twenty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-five roll board, which Mr. Ashcraft, uh, requested of the board. At a meeting last month, and they approved being rolled forward into the E D A's budget lines. And like we just mentioned, it wasn't specified that they stay in the same budget lines, it's kind of just E D A money.
Use wherever you want, it was a design. So we've got a total of one hundred eighty-three thousand.
Yeah, one hundred eighty-three thousand, yeah, four hundred.
FY twenty-four.
FY twenty-four, although the, the majority of that is budgeted to, uh, hiring someone.
Yeah.
The professional services for fifteen thousand, like, if we were to consider, um, having a website built. Um, is that what that would be used for?
Yes, that could be used for.
And then we could use some of our carryover as well, if there was more than that.
I'm sorry if I just missed this, but this vehicle fuel, that's, that's, we have budgeted that in through the P D E A.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As far as funding sources are concerned, keep in mind that the, uh, all the expenses that were, um, allotted to hiring someone or vehicle, gas, things like that. That was coming out of that larger E D A, uh, capital fund, whereas the rest. Operational expenses are coming out of the general fund for the county.
Thank you for presenting it in this manner, everything, sure. Any question? Me at first and second on the treasurer's report? No, okay. Okay, no questions, we move on? It's like Jay here. All right, next, we're doing, uh, new, moving on to new business, or sorry, uh, unfinished business, roundtable contacts, any holder I have myself. We will talk about, so, at the last meeting, we said that we would all bring over two businesses for a total of fourteen, um, to present at this meeting. And we would then talk about those in moving forward for a roundtable. Uh, thank you for those who reached out, I know not everyone that we talked to said yes. Um, but I just thought, I, uh, tally them on this, and if the group would agree, I think. Should be tonight, at least, talk as a group, the people who have been nominated, um. Selected, thank you, Mr. Hartwick, uh, selected, and then possibly we come back at a separate meeting for the next meeting. And then we would make a recommendation as a group.
Uh, I want, my nominee has backed down, they have, this afternoon.
The, and I, uh, I say, like, oh, yeah, I, I spoke to someone this afternoon, and they said, do I have to attend all meetings? I said, yeah, or pretty close to it, I said, no. But, uh, but it honestly is good, we want someone who will run the course of the program. Uh, Mr. Hartwick, give it.
Well, uh, so we have the list of people, and we've got established place. Um, and when we're all starting.
A quick. What's, so, I've got a question coming back for the group, we had said fourteen, would there be an appetite for dropping that number back? Um, Mr. Ashcraft, in, in doing this, we came up with, I believe it's twelve names, and we're stretching at that. Um, would there be a consensus from the group to drop back to possibly seven and cut it in half?
Oh. More the merrier, and, 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 like, the more the merrier, and we have a good cross-section. Uh, I, I don't know what all the things like that, what they do, whatever, but we have a good cross-section. That's the reason I replied back to an email, you know, we had, um, someone at food beverage, because we didn't have it, but we picked up. Two, right.
Two and one.
Oh, one, one, and, and, I, I know, sorry, and, uh, I, I got another one, that's, that she made up.
I mean, that's a valid, fine round.
Yeah, I think we stick with the big number, because not all of them participate in it. And if you cut it down to seven, and all of them don't participate, next thing, we set that by a big couple.
Yeah, I think Mr. Hartwick's right, the more the merrier, I mean, you know, it's too large, but. Fourteen's a nice round number to set around that, you know, lunch table.
And it is, if, if we get that good cross-section of people, and the guest speakers, uh, like Mr. Ashcraft said, and they meet the board supervisors, they attend their care. You know, they, everybody here, administration, from a good cross-section, people, uh, businesses, and I know it's hard, it, it really is hard.
Yeah.
Because, that, uh, I, I just make piss thoughts through comments, well, you know, half the people, uh, feels that, nobody's there. I, I, oh, it goes on that time place. Um, the lady at the fun farm said she'd be glad to do it, so, you know, that's someone at daycare, and your food. Does that make sense, to have a good cross-section of businesses, whatever, instead of piling it up with, like. What I've especially said, developers. We don't, we don't want ten developers on that block, and I agree with you, you know. That's just my comment.
I've got some more here, I'm gonna contact, I think.
So, I guess, in all theory, we, we stick with the list you got, and if we can add a couple more, couple, a couple more, it's good. But we also need to set, you know, when we all start the time plays. And, and.
We, we ought to, I mean, we've got an account on it.
And then, no, we count just yet, so, so then going forward, we'll say, we're not gonna have any more than fourteen, but we'll get as many people that we can up to that. So if it turns out to be ten, if it's ten. Okay, so going down through the list, and these were, should we name them?
Well, yeah, you, I mean, that's appropriate, but if you're, but if you're going, I have a question, no, let's, let's do this, uh. If the, if the process, eventually you're gonna have to approve your member, I would suggest you do that in close session.
Yes, that was.
And then you would come out, and then you would, uh, uh, appoint, uh, whoever you came up with. And if you wanna do partial tonight, and then maybe your next meeting, do the rest, do that, or wait?
I guess that was my question to you, that I meant by that, then should we do it in close session?
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
You talk about qualifications, you, you know, you talk about residency sometimes, I mean, that's your purview to, to approve the, uh, the application. No different what the board supervisor does, when they, when they appoint the members, they've got the close set to come out and, uh, and, uh, formally appoint. So. I mean, you have a list of names there, and they're, they're, they're private right now, uh, that can remain private until you, to, to make an appointment.
Okay.
So, yeah, would that be, can we start a closed session tonight?
Yeah, okay, we're going into closed session, so, do we need to amend the votes? Okay. So, we'll, we'll do that in time, but that, when, when your, rest of your business completed, we'll, we'll, we'll do it then.
Thank, thank you.
But, since he's done it, Mr. Ashcraft has done it, that's a table, what is the number that you think is perfect to get started with?
Well, I think I suggested earlier, uh, if, if there were two appointees per, uh, E D A member, you'd have fourteen.
Okay.
That's where I came up with fourteen.
Okay.
There's no magic number, I, and, but that seemed like a good number, because inevitably, you're never gonna get a hundred percent attendance. You want it, you strive for it, but, uh, it's a long year, uh, people get, you know, have things come up. So, if you can, if you can average eleven, ten, eleven, twelve, uh, for, for, you know, each, each dinner, plus all the other people that you're gonna have there. That's gonna be a good discussion, that's gonna be a good evening or, or lunch, that's gonna be a good opportunity. So I, I think, uh, cap it at fourteen, uh. And then that would allow, if that's how you're doing it, that would allow two people per, uh, per member, and if, if any member wants to give up their right, uh. Of nominating somebody, then they would defer to, to somebody else, if they have three members or four members, I think. There are some, there are some of the members here that have as many as four, four, uh, uh, prospective candidates, which, good work.
And, and there's an updated one.
Okay, maybe I haven't seen that one, okay, okay.
Here's, we got four here.
But that's, that's a good, that's a good, I think for the first year, that would be a perfect, uh, uh, amount.
Okay.
And then after that, then after that, you can just, even grade, you know, and, uh, receive your feedback and feel like it needs more, feel like it needs less, and I. To make that adjustment in years too, but I think that's a good place, so.
Have you, was here, we are.
And it's a fair, and it's a fair way to do it, because each, each of you deserves to have the right to, uh, to appoint two people, two people, to the party.
Thank you, so we'll go to closed session tonight, group, and we'll discuss some of the recommendations, uh, looking at timing. We talked September, we talked February. Would we like to say October? Or December, if we did it every other, when would we like to start this, that we can talk about then?
Well, we talked about that last meeting, they, they wanted, too late in the year, you get into the holiday season and all, so I think Mr. Ashcraft suggested, first, the, February going forward.
I think that's, that always worked, and like, but if you're in a hurry, yeah, come kind of in a hurry.
I think it would be. Start February? Or be October?
Uh, I'd say February first, after, after the year.
Meeting every other month.
Right.
I just think, this might be.
If you do it in October, then you won't have one in December, you know. December is never, we're not to do any of that.
I think, I think that part of our discussion last month, though, was, um, just kind of to have this initial, like, September, late September, early October meeting. Like, as a meet and greet, and to just get their initial thought, so that we could have something to be working on. And moving into, like, the official February start date, I think that's, if I remember correctly, what we had talked about.
So have like a meet greet in October, then announce that this is our schedule, you know, February, we'll start February to be by monthly, right?
And, you know, if there's any major pressing issues that they bring up in September, that gives us four months to play with it.
So the only, I feel like this body, we've got great momentum, the county has fantastic momentum. Really, the only hiccup, if we started in October, would be the December meeting.
So, it won't happen December, but, but December's a hiccup.
Well, well, but December's a hiccup, just because of business.
Every other month.
Yeah, so if we start in October, it would be December. Can we maybe, just throw this out there to the group, just kind of roll with it, just to get it going, maybe we'll have a P, P E D A person by October time. And we can carry the momentum, rather than, you know, this is fresh, a- actually, I've had some fantastic conversations. Because they'd say, why do you want me? And I'd say, well, this is what we're looking for, this is the feedback, and then they go into all this great stuff. So I think some of these ideas that these people might fizzle between now, and then we're starting the process all over again. I, I make recommendation, we iron this out by September, we start October, December, we hope for good attendance. But we just, we roll with it, before we know it, round one will be over. Will we look for round two? Second year. Round one being the first year, the first calendar year. As long as before the first calendar year is over, we'd start looking for number, so in month ten, we'll really have to start priming the pump for the second round. I, I would say, I would make a suggestion that we go for, we have it ironed by October, still fresh on our county business supplies. And then for the December meeting, we're only talking an hour and a half, two hours for lunch, might be a little holiday, let's get together.
It's gonna be at lunchtime, but. It, it, I mean, we decided that.
We, we haven't, it was lunch for.
Uh, our home is. For a few of them, you know, they're running businesses on things, I think, for us, I think. Because. Like me, October, I'm wild. And a lot of these other people run businesses, you know, they got their own, from uh, you know, he started fourth year. So I think people lose a lot of them, but can't go on.
Wouldn't it make sense to the group to say, for the first meeting, we have an evening, take a pulse on the group? And then go forward, I, I know when we're dealing with some of the um. Corporate businesses in the county, and that's not to classify anything, but someone who's maybe not an owner, but a manager. They gave me feedback that lunchtime would be good to break, break from the day for an hour and a half, but they have staff that keeps the business open. Uh, someone like that may not wanna do evening, that's their goal. We'll, we'll have two sides of it. So it's a group in consensus that Octo, we shoot for October, we'll have our businesses lined up, we'll go for December, October will be evening. With light on, nerves needed.
Okay, question, if we call a special meeting, you were, we still can discuss this in a special meeting?
Oh, true.
Okay, I just want, I just want to clarify.
Yes.
You wanna be specific in your call for the special meeting.
Okay, I was just saying, you know, we got more information, we wanna go over, that's why I was asking, can we go over?
Sure.
Let's work a draft, yeah, let's go with.
We've got tremendous momentum, I like.
Well, that gives us two meetings, you know, you got September, a special call meeting to go over this again. That could give you a lot better opportunity, that's why I wonder if we could.
Yeah. All right, ex- excellent, moving on. Thank you, group, uh, new business, do we still have small business assistants to discuss, or did we take care of that?
I guess it's pretty much, I don't know, but what else we could discuss on?
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't sure if you had a separate uh.
No, no, no.
So, I mean, while we're here, though, um. I feel like we need to develop some kind of rubric, or some kind of way for A, the business, new businesses to know that this is available, and B, like, how do we evaluate their position?
That's, that's what we were discussing, we're gonna have to, to come up with some kind of. Uh.
Guide line.
Guide line.
Sure.
Performance, and, and the grant itself.
Do we know, are, are, do, are there other economic development authorities in the state that have some kind of model like this that we could look at?
They have to take the responsibility of trying to put a draft of the guidelines together.
Okay.
Um, and then uh, it was just like your roundtable appointment, you were going to closed session. And consider the qualifications, the merits of the grant, and then you would uh, come out and announce. If, if you chose to award them, you would not, you would not debate qualifications in a, in a open session.
Okay, would, would the group like to, you know, we always have these little special projects. Would we like to talk with the business owners in the county and see potentially what grants? Or what things might be needed via signage, uh landscaping aside? And then we can send those comments?
Yes, I think that, they said that they're gonna look at what other E D As do and kind of frame something up for us, and then we can revise it based on.
Okay, I just didn't know anything unique to this county, maybe signage, something like that. Just to give ideas, the administration will be here to track that.
There's some, there's some cities in counties that have, particularly those that are in hardship, uh, they lose a lot of high unemployment, uh, there's a lot of incentive programs that are going out there. Uh, and we can even explore a little bit to see if there's any opportunity from the state, maybe bad something that we might put out, or spoil it at as well. Uh, I've not seen it, but it doesn't mean it's not, it's not there, we just have a round, take it forward. So give us a, you know, give us some designated amount of time, and we'll, we'll do some research for you. Put the guideline, you know, that's yet to put some guidelines together.
So, thank you. Um, all right, moving, moving on.
Should we give them the timeline? Like, are we wanting to discuss this in our next special meeting, or do we want to discuss it in September?
Yes, so it would be a follow-up.
I mean, September.
That's, that's, once the guideline, is, is it too unreasonable, come up with some kind of idea by next week? Uh, you know, it, just a drum on it, it.
We would intend to have it by your next meeting.
Right, okay.
And if you tell us you want it by your next, if you have a special meeting, then that means we have to hurry it up a little bit more, but, no, I said, no, if you're, we'll, we'll have something for you by the next meeting.
So, September will be, be, be fine. Is anything that we can help you with, or whatever.
Let you know, but I, I think there's enough samples out there, and, and uh, you know. There's multiple ways to do it, and I, I will, we'll see what best fits the county and, and, and your preference.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on, number twelve, uh, next meeting will be September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and it'll be a work session.
Mr. Chairman, if we could go back uh, ten B real quick, uh, that's fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry, I scratched that off.
And the other reason that I uh, that I put that on here is, is because of, I want to, in your packet, if you go to task ten. You'll see a newsletter from Go Virginia, uh, and there's a lot of good information in there, but if you look at the page number eleven point one. There is a very, very important economic development summit. That's scheduled for uh, the middle part of January. And I know it's August, and when I look into January, but I thought it was important for each of you to try to put that on your calendar, because if you can. Because I think that will be a really important uh, uh summit to go to, since Colonial be. Uh, it looks like they may have another one in Dover, uh, so we'll get some more details on it, I just wanted you to uh. To be kind of marking your calendars, try to keep that time open if you can, because I think uh, our. Our presence at the regional thing help us, and it will help uh, do the recruitment of, of many things, so.
And that was a great, and thank you, Mr. Minister, for sending that out, it was a great read, I actually read through a bunch of those. Look like they um, so V D P has bagels and coffee, uh, like starting businesses and different business support, something Stafford area, I think it's tomorrow, they've got one. Or they do it virtually as well, I might have said virtually. You never lose too much, but very good reads of that, thank you. Anything else before moving on?
Is um. Is this something that you would want, that ideally you would want everybody on the E D A to attend?
Well, they could.
Okay.
Unless, no, I haven't seen any guidelines that says you have to have, uh, you know, attendance, but if I do, I would let everybody know, but I think. We in some way need to be represented, and uh, there's not very many that I would suggest that you go, that everybody go, because sometimes you come back and report back, but. This will really be a bit uh, awful.
And is there a registration fee? I think we have four hundred dollars.
Uh, that I'm not sure, I don't even know if those details have been sent out yet.
Oh, no, we have twenty-five hundred.
It might be, uh, it might.
Okay.
Maybe you have to pay for lunch. Twenty-second and twenty-third of January.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion, so next meeting, September thirteenth? We have no other business to discuss, twenty twenty-three's work session, do we have a motion to enter into closed meeting?
Mr. Brant, would you mind reading the uh, the motions as they are put? You know, motion of second, adopt, uh, approval.
First and second? Do you get a bullet, you'd say all in favor? All in favor? Ah, all opposed? All right, closer.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we have, I have to, and, now you'll have to leave the building if we don't want you to come back when they come back, but uh.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for uh, being with us.
What a fantastic job you've done with this farmer's market. I'm serious, I'm just not saying, saying, I mean, you talk about coming up with an idea, running. That part you want still has people, I still see the great photo. I mean.
It's certainly got its challenges, I don't even know if we're having to pop up.
Motion to convene in regular session? First, second, call in favor?
Ah, ah.
All right.
We need to certify, first or is it, is that?
Okay, a roll call?
Number, gotta certify a state.
Certified these things.
Oh, sir, no, 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 you're certi, you're certifying that what you went in under, the provision of closed uh, meeting. What you went in under, that was the only business that was discussed. So you need a motion, you need a second?
We have a second.
And you need a roll call, buddy.
Is Mr.? Hi.
Mr. Hardway.
And then, and then uh, then you can uh, consider your appointment.
Thank you, everyone, so consider our appointments for the business roundtable, to start in October and run every other month. We have Abbott Trucking, M and M Pizza, B P April's Place, Kenwood Builders, Farm Bureau Insurance, Cut Rate Hallin. J and Mills, Daryl Kellum Inc., Flint Rivers Realty. K T R Equipment, Matap, Matapune Reserve. Uh, Rudy's Bidding, Biddings, and. Oh, Atlanta Union Bank.
And a motion, there's a second to accept, and both.
Thank you, we have a second. And.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Before you adjourn, Mr. Williams, I need to ask you a question, uh, you, you and I talked uh, some once, a few weeks ago about. Um, political campaigning at the farmer's market and what the regulations might be. Would you mind, would you mind repeating that, uh, for the record, as to what uh?
Yes, so um. The Board of Farmers from the category, beginning of the two thousand, that we're not going to allow any political. So, uh, whether it's a general political boost or intended for office.
Thank you, I just wanted to make that clear, because that's, that's something that's them up again, and just wanted to, to make that clear, so. Chairman, you, there's no other uh, business from staff, but you're, you're free to, you're.
Well, I got one item, I just want to break, last meeting, I gave y'all each a packet from Rapanic Electric, Economic Development Department. And Felicia, who is our Economic Development Director, been talking to her, and she'd be glad to come down one meeting and talk about what she does. She is heavily involved in economic development up north, and uh, and she's, she's very good, and thought maybe she might give us some pointers, so. Sometimes she'd be, she'd be glad to come to one of our meetings, if you so desire, in the future.
And on that note, Mr. Chairman, we do have a uh, a candidate for interviews, that, that two people, that's often developed. Director position, I believe that appears to, that's a Campbell, a great to be uh, in this. So, I'll be out of town, unfortunately.
Fifteenth, next Tuesday, three thirty.
Before we adjourn, we're gonna have a special meeting, to go over guidelines for. The grant, what was that?
That's something we'll follow up, we'll leave it over here, yeah.
It, it'd take four to eight hours to call a special meeting.
Okay, I didn't know, some way.
Yeah, but whenever you decide if you wanna do one, uh, then uh, we have to allow four to eight hours.
Okay.
All right, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
First, we have second, thank you. Oh, all in favor? All opposed? Motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned, sorry. Thank you, thank you.